No.
No, okay. Okay, dear. Okay, so shall I call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM on this nice snow day? I'm just gonna remind everybody that we are being recorded for future broadcast on the local cable and YouTube. So, do we have public comment from our public? Do you have any public comments, Mr. Mackin?
No. I'll wait for my point me agenda.
Okay. So, I don't really have anything to report. So, we're gonna go to the review and approve warrants on the table, which we are doing. Do we have a line item transfer?
We do not have line item transfer.
We have to review and approve the minutes. I know that everyone took a good look at those, and we had some corrections. So, are we ready to approve them with the corrections? No? So, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve November, December, and January meeting minutes with corrections.
Second, all on paper?
Aye.
And now the superintendent's report.
Yes, welcome, everyone, on this nice snowy evening. And I wanted to let you know that we just had a delightful trip to the Worcester County Superintendents Association Annual Scholars Luncheon. That was held Tuesday, January 9th. It is when Annabelle and Mr. Stanafino and I attended. It was, once again, just a really lovely gathering of all the scholars that were selected from all the Worcester County Public Schools and the vocational schools as well. And the students are acknowledged. We read short little bios for each one of them, and they receive a nice little token of our appreciation. Assumption College was the one that hosted it this year. It moves around the various universities in Worcester County, and each university takes the opportunity to celebrate those scholars and maybe do a little recruiting while they're at it. And I thoroughly enjoyed this. And here is the program that I always like bringing back to you, and you can see that each scholar has their photo, and each scholar selects a quote or a motto to go with their photos as well. And you can see where the schools that they're coming from. I think Mr. Stanafino said, "Oh, great, I have a wonderful collection of quotes for the sign," because, you know, Mr. Stanafino does such a nice job of maintaining our digital sign out that way. So, that was an added benefit in terms of helping students select some of these inspirational quotes that are out there. We sent you, I believe, a recent update on our attendance for December. I continue to -- we hear of all the illness that is going around, and yet, we know at the Lunenburg Primary School during the month of December, attendance there was 93 percent. That is a little lower than typical, because usually we're 95, 96, but it's not falling below 90 percent, which is really a threshold that we work hard, and I know our nurses work hard to get those kiddos healthy and back into classrooms. At Turkey Hill Elementary, it was 94.49 percent. The attendance at Lunenburg Middle School for that period in December was 94.87 percent. And then the high school's attendance was 95.25 percent. So, we continue to have attendance when we look at, from the beginning of the school year, 95, 96, 97 percentiles across all our buildings. So, very good attendance, and we appreciate all the parents are doing to keep their kids healthy, keep them home when they're sick, but send them to school otherwise, because that's where we need them, in those classrooms, ready to learn. I wanted to also let everyone know that the basketball boosters sent me a notice this week and indicated and asked for us to share this, and we'll be doing it through our variety of ways to help share information. But on January 30th, I have the games where the girls varsity plays at 5:30 and boys varsity at 7 o'clock. Our opponent that evening is Littleton, and they will be doing the Baskets for Brandon Cancer Game Promotions. And once again, the fundraisers, all the fundraising from this event will go to the Katoni family and Brandon, who's a second grader at the primary school. So, just if you're able to come out and support that effort, that'd be great. If you're not able to come out, you can still support that effort. I'm sure if you just give our office a call, we can put you in touch with one of the boosters, and they can tell you how to contribute and support. So, that is the superintendent's report tonight. I know that it is a snowy evening out there, and we have some other really important things to celebrate. I'll end my report with that.
Okay. So, now we have the MSBA closeout documents with Mr. Mackin for signature.
Thank you, it's good to see you all.
You too. Couple of words we want. Did you plan that?
I'm sorry?
Did you plan your Lunenburg blue for this meeting?
I did.
Welcome back, Mr. Mackin, and thank you for all you've done with the school building committee. One of the members, one of many members, who actually served from the time the committee was organized in 2012. In my last superintendent's update, I was actually quite shocked, because I knew it'd been a long time, but to see that the building, school building committee, really got rolling in February 2012. And it was just last week we had the final meeting.
So, yes, last week we had the final meeting of the school building committee. At that meeting, we did our final invoice. The invoice was, we presented, the BRR was presented to the board of selection yesterday?
No, the invoice, the mark, yep.
And so, that's the final invoice for the work. Yeah, as Superintendent Combs mentioned, it was February 2012 when we had the first meeting. But Superintendent Combs also knows that this, you know, the journey of the thousand miles started about 12 years ago.
True.
So, I, first of all, I wanted to thank each and every one of you because of your support during my time on the committee as a member of this committee and as the chair of the school building committee. I appreciate all the support, encouraging words that people had. And we went through the project with the town accountant before last week's meeting, and what I can report to you is that the project funding agreement, the original one voted by the town, was for $72,590,848, if you want the exact number. As you may recall, because bids came lower than expectation, the PFA was actually revised Spent to date, $68,106,474 change. So, the bottom line is that the project was completed $4.4 million under budget. That's also good news, not just for the overall project. Now, this next number I'm gonna give you, it's not a hard and fast number, because only the MSBA knows what they will eventually approve on all the things that were sent in their way. That will be included in what they consider the local share. But we're pretty close. I mean, we've got a number that we think is, give or take, you know, fairly high confidence. The local share will be $2.5 million under the budgeted amount that we began with when we started the project. So, that's $2.5 million that taxpayers will not have to cover.
Yeah, which is always good news.
Absolutely good news. So, as I was often fond of saying, we brought the project in.
Do it. Wait, wait. Well, I'm aware of it. Do it.
On time and under budget.
Absolutely.
So, I just have a quick question. How will that $2.5 million factor into the note? The bottom line?
It will be money that was not borrowed.
So, the note, so the note, what we borrow is that amount less?
Right.
And it's not a final? Yeah, yes.
Because there was going to be, the last note, again, I believe, didn't cover everything. There was a little left over there. Assuming that there was going to be some need to adjust along the way.
Do you know if it will be presented to the town any different? Because there were initial amounts that were presented in terms of not only what the note would be, but what that would mean for individual taxpayers by?
Yeah, I don't have that information, but we can certainly add it.
I'm just curious what the difference is for folks at $2.5 million less, you know?
How much were you not going to be spending?
Yeah. Anything is good, but I'm sure people might ask that question. Taxpayers might ask that.
I think it's a good question, and I think we'll get the answer to it.
Yeah, okay.
You know, Karen Broschew, the town financial director, has just been marvelous throughout this project, and it's been a lot of additional work for herself as well in terms, she was the one putting all the warrants into ProPay, working with the MSBA on what's entering it into their system so they could make the payments that they're making to the town, et cetera. That closeout process will continue, because there will be an audit of the entire project before. That's why that last number that Mr. Mackin was speaking of is one that is still under review. They're, you know, I think they probably based it on conservative figures, but that's yet to be final finalized, and that comes with the audit. But I think it would be helpful for the community to hear more about how this process flows at this point in time, and as you said, the actual impact upon, or lack of the impact on their tax bills as a result of this. So, I will reach out to Ms. Broschew, because I think she and definitely the town manager will be able to assist us in getting that information. And I know we'll be before the board of selectmen next Tuesday evening, sharing the same information and also the forms that I'll be sharing with you in a few minutes with, to make these things public as well. So, thank you for asking those questions, so we have some time to get those answers and that information for folks.
To me, it's that last step in the success of this project, because at the end of the day, for our taxpayers, not only do we have an amazing facility that they can utilize as well as our students, but at a lower cost than we initially thought, so fantastic.
Yep.
Yeah. I want to take this opportunity now also to publicly thank everybody that served on the school building committee, including our newest member, who came to the meeting last week.
Morning done, Jim.
Good job.
I was inefficient.
Good job. And there's a lot of folks over the space of that six years that contributed enormously to this project. And, yeah, the vice chair pointed out something I didn't even realize, which is that in six years, I never missed a meeting.
Wow, wow. That's good.
That's amazing.
And there were a lot of meetings.
Six years, so.
Yes. I think that that attendance record held pretty strongly even through the construction meetings, which were weekly and sometimes a couple times a week, depending on where we were at in the project, so.
That is dedicated.
Absolutely.
So, the last thing for the school committee to do now is where there is that document that needs to be signed off on.
Yep, two of them. It's a bookkeeping budget revision request, and it is notated that this is the total budget revision request is what this is. As with other budget revision requests, the I, as superintendent, am required to review and assure everyone that certified that what's being reported here is accurate. And I've gone through this with our project manager as well as with Mrs. Broschew to do just that. And what is happening here is from the construction budget, they are moving $790,159.3. So, $790,159,03 is being moved from construction contingency, or it's being moved into the entire construction contingency fund. So, it was in the construction budget, so it was there to be paid to Shawmet, should it be necessary to pay them to Shawmet as the construction managers of the project, but it was unspent, so it's being moved over into the general construction contingency fund, and that is what gives you that bottom line. So, that, just the budget construction amount down to $58,392,583,97, and that's Shawmet's portion. That would just be for Shawmet's portion. So, there was additional contracts outside the Shawmet construction project as well. So, that's what this budget revision request is. I have signed it as superintendent. Ms. Roka can sign and attest to it that we've shared it, that we've made the information available, and as I said, I can attest to the numbers that appear on that document and have signed off on that, so. Any questions about this?
We all see copies of that.
With your packet, you saw what the information that was contained in there.
Right. Okay. So, I'm good to sign? Do we need to make a motion for that? Or do we just?
I think that's up to the chair. In the past, we just made it public, but if Ms. Roka would prefer to have a motion, I know the board of selectmen, I believe, have taken votes authorizing the chair to sign when we've done this process. But it's the will of the committee at this point in time.
I'll take a motion. I'll make the motion to allow the chair to sign the MSBA closeout documents, and we'll sit down. Is that the whole?
That's it.
Okay, that's it. Second, all on paper?
Aye. And with that, there was also, I think it was with that, what? The letter of closeout from Shawmet indicating that the last payment had been requested and what the final construction contract value was, which is that amount that I shared with you before, $58,392,583,97. So, that was contained in there, and was the letter from Shawmet acknowledging and documenting that final construction number. The other document that we have is a school building authority document as well, and it's called the commissioning certificate of completion. So, when these buildings are constructed, the MSBA requires a commissioning agent, consultant be employed. They have these folks on there that they work with, and they identify and sign somebody to us, so they can coordinate with the project manager and the construction managers to commission the building, which means making sure all the systems are operating and balanced and those kinds of things. So, what this document does is it talks about the commissioned systems, which ones they were, all of them that were applicable, except voice data and video systems, those weren't commissioned by this agent. And then it also indicates that the project manager is acknowledging that functional performance tests for each subset system were performed, and that all the listed, all the items listed on the issues log were resolved, and that the post-commissioning visit site took place and the project review. And so, we have a signature by our project manager, NV5, so one of their employees who served here with us, signed off verifying that, certifying that. And then Mr. Londa completed for the owner that how we felt about the callbacks. And we did indicate on this that we experienced some significant control issues with HVAC controllers, and we've had to reestablish twice, but then brought with rates that were giving signals to that. And that Mr. Londa continues to work with consultants to get those resolved. He feels that this, we called him out several times during the warranty period, which ended in September of 2017, when a large section of the HVAC controls could no longer maintain communication with the overall system. And at that time, it was necessarily to manually disconnect those controllers and reconnect them and restore them. We anticipate that we'll see this yet again, and we have, and we're still working on getting all the controllers referenced to a single band rate there. So, we said that were the issues resolved to the owner's satisfaction. We checked no on that box, because it continues to be an ongoing. I can tell you the consultants from the agencies, the technical consultants, have been very involved, I think, in talking to Mr. Londa. It's fair to report that he felt that as the director of facilities, that it would be his hope that in the future projects, and this is our feedback to the MSBA, that our own director of facilities be involved more in that commissioning process, that he felt that that commissioning agent worked primarily with the construction folks and the project manager, but didn't necessarily always loop him in. And so, that's our feedback to them. While many issues were resolved, we continue working with the controls contractor. Mr. Londa feels that we will indeed get these issues resolved, but at this point in time, they still need to be addressed, and we just want to make sure that we put on record and gave this feedback to the MSBA. So, that's what this document is all about. And once again, the chair of the school committee is asked to acknowledge and sign this as well.
So, I'll take a motion to approve.
What is the title of that document?
Oh, the title of this, again, certainly, too, is commissioning certificate of completion.
All right, I'll make a motion to allow the chair to sign the commissioning certificate of completion. My second?
Aye. And those are the final sign offs. There's three of each, yes, of course. Everything's addressed. Those are the final documents to be signed until that audit gets completed and we finalize all the, I'm sure the MSBA has one more for us to fill out at least after that audit. And once again, Mr. Mackin, thank you. I know that you invited, and we hope the members of the school building committee are able to be there next week.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday for the community to once again acknowledge them. I know they were part of our homecoming parade, and we certainly had a lovely dedication ceremony, but there's, you can never say thank you enough, and it's a big thank you. We love this facility. It's just been an amazing facility for our students to learn in and our teachers and staff to teach in. And I want to just once again acknowledge just what good care of the facility our students continue to give and provide, and acknowledge what an amazing gift from the community it was. So, thank you all again.
Thank you, Mr. Mackin.
And just at the final, I just want to express my really deep and sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve in this project. It was enjoyable. Thank you.
We all appreciate it. Yep, thanks for coming out on a snowy night. You know what it's like to try to reschedule. Not enough hours to do it.
Or the week, days in the week. Can I have donations for us?
I just wanted to acknowledge a couple. I think we've talked about it, but I did want to let you know that Turkey Hill has notified us. I'm not sure that the checks have arrived at the other buildings, but certainly Turkey Hill Elementary School has received their $1,000 donation from the Lunenburg Parent Teacher Organization. And as we reported at the last meeting, it's anticipated that each one of the buildings will be receiving one of those. But I wanted to acknowledge that once again, and all the work of all the PTO who do so much to support our students and our schools. And also, I wanted to acknowledge a check in the amount of $2,875.44 from the Square One Art at Turkey Hill Middle School.
What do I say?
It was $2,875.44.
Wow. I always loved Square One Art.
So, that was, you know, that was what generous donors did in terms of supporting that particular event and what it meant for Turkey Hill. And then also, I wanted to acknowledge that we had a box top, another box tops for education. It was $932.20. That's a lot of box tops.
$9,320 bucks.
And whoever's in charge of carrying those?
So, I did ask, because it, you know, I'm getting that information so we can be sure to look at it.
She's new. If I had.
Oh, she was on your page one day.
On the Lunenburg School and Community page, the new box top coordinator introduced herself and reminded folks about how to donate.
I just don't remember her name.
I don't either. She's fairly new to Lunenburg, which is great, because this was her first volunteer opportunity, so she was excited. And she, you know, just is going to make sure she reminds folks on a, you know, somewhat regular basis to collect your box tops and send them in.
And I know, being a member of the Lunenburg Women's Club, those ladies are so diligent in terms of bringing those into the meetings and passing them along to us. And it is something that is relatively easy for everyone. You don't have to dig in your pocket for money. There are products that you're probably already buying, and you can see the difference that they make. We will definitely find out who's doing that and acknowledge them. I asked the principals and the secretaries to see how far we can go back with some of these donations, because there's been a substantial amount of money that's come into the district through the box top program. So, another nice donation there, so I just wanted to acknowledge those.
Yeah, all right. So, are all businesses a calendar?
So, we sent this out. I know I did a pretty comprehensive review during the last time that we met. I did make the changes that, from the feedback from the board.
Yeah, thank you.
And that absolutely, you know, perfect observation that it's still the 180th day of school, it's just five more days later because of the snow days. We, when we sent this out, we did receive one question, just someone curious as to why the PD date ended up on November 6th instead of perhaps making it a longer weekend for parents and having it on the 5th. And I responded, our rationale for that is that's election day, and we want to be able to participate with the other school districts in terms of, we're doing more shared professional development. And so, we wanted to be like many of our colleagues and put it on that Tuesday. I think we had the discussion as well last week, or two weeks ago, where we talked about also moving dates through the week, so not every day off ends up being.
The same day off.
The same day, because of how that impacts the schedules.
Especially the high school.
So, that, perhaps some of you received feedback from folks, as sure who were out in the community and talking.
The only that we have is.
But that was the only one that we had.
The only one that we have is why do we have the board?
Because it's a snow day, that's all.
That's all we hear, right?
Yes, that's, this is the time of year when you hear that question.
Because it's a snow day.
Because when you get lots of, you know, several snow days in January and February, there's always the question mark.
Right, right. And I know that Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I know the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education continues to encourage districts to move to a March date. We certainly went through a process and arrived with some guidelines that keep a February break and an April break in our calendar. Those guidelines are there now, so that conversation will continue, I imagine. And it's, those guidelines are school committee policy and school committees can change those policies, so. But these were developed according to the guidelines that we worked with our Teachers' Association on this call. So consistent with that.
So how long are we going to wait on the two approvals for next year?
I was thinking that folks wanted to.
Today? Okay, that's fine with me. I just want to make sure.
And I did alert the public to that.
Okay.
You know, that you guys have been tuning in, we put it out there. And as I said, we received a one comment, so question.
Okay, so I will take a motion to approve.
I, oh, sorry. I make a motion that we approve the 2018, 2019 Lunenburg Public Schools calendar.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is done. Everyone can put it on their calendar for next year.
We will change it in the draft to approve this of tonight and we'll start circulating it in the whole studio.
Okay.
People can start climbing their big ideas.
Yes, every year, I don't even ever plan that far in advance. No futures for, future topics for discussion? Do you have one?
I do. Is it possible, I know that there have been some new thoughts from the Department of Education regarding options around snow days. I would love for us to, whether it be workshop or have discussion around what the state is putting forward and just, you know.
You're talking about the snow bag and things.
Like the blizzard bag.
Correct. The bags.
If the state is putting forward some thoughts or options around this, if we can just have a presentation on that.
I think put together some guidelines on that. They were released January 5th. I know there's some pilots going on, so we could certainly do some investigation into that as well. I have it on the administrative team meeting agenda for Wednesday next week is when they meet. I know that there have been discussions already, I believe, at the Lunenburg Primary School that some of the staff have talked about this. So it is an interesting concept and there are some guidelines now from the state to look at. There are a couple of states, I believe, that have existing guidelines. So I think it may take us a while to pull this all together about how, how much time? When would you like to see this presentation, do you think?
So I would want to give, you know, obviously administrators are going to talk about this. It is not until later in the spring when more has been discussed and more potential options in each school building because obviously how, if we were going to do this, each building, you know, if we were going to, would work differently. So before we really hear about it, I would love to, you know, see if each building, after having it on their agenda with you as administrators, if they, you know, have this discussion at staff meetings, so if they came to us later in the spring.
Okay.
Just with something more formulated.
Not necessarily a proposal, but what, this is what it says and then these are the kinds of things that we need to investigate to put this together.
Yes, once, once our administrators have had a chance to talk with their staff, you know, obviously I'm assuming that after you meet with them, that's something they would share with their staff. So once that has had a chance to take place, you know, thoughts on this from each building would be great as a first step.
Right. Are these bags supposed to make up days? Would they not have to make up days?
Well, not only that, that's what I'm not clear about, so it's hard as.
Or is this just to keep their learning up to date so that when they're home, they're not doing nothing and they're not slacking in behind?
Absolutely not.
As opposed to adding, you know what I'm saying? Because I don't know how a day at home with your mom makes up for, even if, even if you had work, makes up for a whole school day. It just to me doesn't make any sense.
And perhaps we can do these, let us start getting into the guidelines because we really haven't had a chance to sit and really examine those. As I said, I know that there are some pilots going on. We'd like to generate some questions to folks about those things and just come back and talk about all of those aspects.
Right, I wanted to hear what is the state saying and then what, in response, what are our ideas in terms of ideas around this? Just to begin some discussion.
It seems like technology certainly opens up a lot of doors there for this. This is, is almost hybrid learning, you know, blended learning taking place. And yet not, we can't, we can't say that every child in the district has a device or we know that not every child has access at home. And I, and some districts have talked about they wouldn't want the younger children using devices for this time either, which sounds to me like that means that their parents need to be engaged around it as well. So I think there's, it's, I think it's at least an opportunity to investigate now, which it's never been in the past because prior to this time, the DESE, the commissioner was not really, didn't embrace the idea, I guess is how I want to say it. So it's, it's very new in terms of Massachusetts even considering that. But there are other states that evidently have to.
Rhode Island has taken advantage of that from this area.
I said they were, they have pilots going on.
Just the beginnings of us talking about this because if it's, if there's potential in the future for this, you know, I'd love for us to, you know, begin those discussions initially because the reality is we face every year at this time, when you get a lot of snow days, you know, people feeling like.
Yeah, we haven't had a full week. We haven't had a full week.
You know, lots of education here and then sort of tacking it on at the end. So if there are ways to supplement that during this time, especially if you have a snowy winter, just something for us to look at.
I would be doubtful that we could bring a proposal to you, but we can certainly look at these and talk about the conversation. I'm mindful that the time that particularly the high school, but every school has in terms of all of their faculty meetings are already programmed out, so I want to acknowledge that. And I'll talk to the admin team next week and then at the next meeting, I can perhaps give you some timelines of what we think we can do and what we think we can bring that back to you, just to make it meaningful for everyone.
Absolutely. And certainly this isn't something that would happen overnight at all, but I think in order for anything to potentially progress, we've got to begin with it.
Right, then have to start investigating.
Great.
Thank you. Will do.
Anything?
Nope.
Nothing. And we don't have anything on the agenda for any meetings.
No, I think we're good.
We're good.
I did communicate and I think Mr. Hinshaw mentioned this, there was a formula there in the spreadsheets and Mr. Cassidy recognized it, immediately saw it when it was brought to his attention and once his face turned from beet red to back to its usual color, he said, "I'll take care of that. I'm, please offer my apologies to the school committee and I'm doing that on his behalf." I told him not to stay to do that tonight. But as I looked at that, we can, it was my intent all along to not bring that budget in above that 5.5%. And so I have identified the curriculum adoption line as well as the capital planning, capital projects line as areas that we can make the necessary reductions. So the formula will be adjusted to be the appropriate formula to give you the percentages and I'll make adjustments in those two lines. So the bottom line will change, the percentage will be what, what the percentage needs to be, which is the 5.5%.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn 7:42 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.